Mark, you said wait?
I'm good. All set.
All right, let them in. Here we go, here comes everybody.
Wow. Hey. Lots of people.
Wait till it fills up.
Three six and one more coming in, almost there.
Board members should mute themselves unless they're talking.
Yes, I agree. I'm gonna mute all and then I think folks, actually if I do, they can focus on mute themselves or not. We don't know, we'll find out.
Yeah, we'll have to find out. I don't think they can. I don't think they can. I think that's the way I said it.
It seems like I can unmute myself, just let you guys know.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
All right, we've got. Waiting room is empty, Mark, so if you want to get cracking, we can get cracking.
That sounds great. I hear some noise or whatever, but okay.
Yeah, I guess just maybe ask everybody to mute themselves when they're not talking or on.
All right, welcome, everybody. This is the Town of Caroline's April 28, 2020 public hearing on the proposed local law providing for a moratorium on action site plan or subdivision review for a period of 180 days. Public hearing is hereby opened. If you would, be sure to mute yourself if you can when you're not speaking. So this meeting is being recorded and will be posted along with meeting minutes on the town website. We have proposed this local law as a measure of due diligence, given that the town's comprehensive plan has been under rigorous review and revision after multiple public meetings and a townwide survey over the past few years and is projected to be completed by late summer or fall of this year. This will enable the town board to evaluate. This will enable the town board.
Excuse me, can't the host mute everybody?
Yeah, I think so.
Clearly, somebody needs muting.
All right, I've muted everybody. Mark, you're unmuted.
Okay, thanks, John. So I'm gonna start over with this paragraph. We propose this local law as a measure of due diligence, given that the town's comprehensive plan has been under rigorous review and revision after multiple public meetings and a townwide survey over the past few years and is projected to be completed by late summer or fall. This will enable the town board to evaluate the existing development guidance tools of the town in light of the updated comprehensive plan to determine whether we wish to consider additional land use regulations. The draft moratorium is a pause, not a prohibition, on developments subject to site plan and subdivision review to ensure that we do our best to protect the vision and the future of Caroline. This public hearing is for the town board to receive comments and information. We will be listening tonight to inform our deliberations. We will not be responding. This is a draft law for which we are still considering information and recommendations from our attorney and the public. If there are modifications, those will be provided to the public with sufficient notice prior to bringing the law to a vote. We will not be voting on this proposal at tonight's meeting. I am proposing that we hold a vote on this proposed law at our May 13 town board business meeting and that tonight's public hearing be held open until that time. I would expect that the town board will discuss the moratorium at both our May 5 and May 13 town board meetings. So if you wish to address the board, please raise your blue Zoom hand. Click on Participants on your control bar and then you will see the hand raise option at the bottom of your participants window. Councilman Frasier will unmute and call on speakers in sequence. We ask that speakers limit their comments to no more than three minutes and maintain respectful discourse. You can also submit comments in writing to the town clerk, clerk@townofcaroline.org. The petitions and all comments received to date have been posted at the town website in the moratorium folder under the Current Topics tab. So with that, we will now open the meeting for a public comment.
Okay, Jesse Bates is first, and I'm muting you now.
Induce yourself.
No, but.
Jesse Bates. Hello, Jesse.
I don't know if we've lost Jesse. It sounds like there might have been a connection issue.
Okay.
We can hear Jesse a little bit later. Renee Thero is next.
Okay. Renee, go ahead when you're unmuted. Hello, Renee.
Here, Mark, I had to unmute myself.
Oh, okay.
There must be your mute and unmute is not working. I don't know. But anyway, I'll just continue. First, I wanted to just thank you all for the service that you do for all of us in the Town of Caroline. And I wanted to just tell you right now, right up front, I'm so proud to be a resident of Caroline. I've lived in a town in our home, built in 1880, set on 14 and a half acres of land on Route 79 between Landen Road and Caroline School. Tonight, we find ourselves considering the revision of a 2020 town comprehensive plan. What also looms is the potential of a large commercial development at the site of Route 79 and Landen Road. I implore the town board to pass a moratorium to halt the building of any commercial development so that our planning review board has the time to consider the comprehensive plan revision, but also consider long overdue zoning ordinances for the future development of our town. My list of concerns is long, and I've scripted those in a letter that I sent to all of you tonight. I'd like to cite one concern, though, especially troublesome. Sustainability of any proposed commercial development needs to be considered. Let's take, for example, hypothetically, a dollar store whose low cost items, who sell low cost items, and cigarettes, by the way. With a 10-mile radius of Caroline, there are eight such stores and proposals of more to come. I have enclosed photos in the letter I sent to you tonight that I took last weekend. At the intersection of 38 and 13 alone, there are three sites, two abandoned retail dollars, retail spaces who appear to be dollar-like stores, quote unquote, dollar-like stores. These retail spaces are empty shelves of buildings abandoned by their owner with trash surrounding. It is unbelievable to note that in the adjacent block, not only .4 miles around the corner, a brand new dollar-like store is open on Route 13. So just in closing, what we need to consider moving forward and crafting our comprehensive plan and improving any commercial building site in the future is sustainability. A signal to other developers in the future with the planning threshold of the Town of Caroline is, it's really about the future that we have to consider. Can we work together to nurture green building, sustainable planning, healthy living, low cost development, local businesses? Can we nurture the surrounding delicate environment and the needs of doing and the needs of those who live here? I think we can. Thanks.
Thank you, Renee. Barbara.
Barbara's up next.
Barbara Newt.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you, and I too want to thank the board for taking on this very important issue of addressing a moratorium on commercial development for 180 days. And I'd like to just remind everybody that a moratorium is totally appropriate, something for a local community to put in place to halt development temporarily while appropriate municipal land use controls and community planning, including a comprehensive plan, are developed and are finalized. It takes time to put together a good community plan of this sort, and that's exactly what the Town of Caroline is devoting. I found it offensive, actually, to read the April 15 letter that was submitted by Franklin Associates that purports that because the Town of Caroline has already spent 2,190 days on developing a comprehensive plan, that it's unreasonable and unfathomable to the Franklin Associates group to spend another 180 days on that project to finalize the comprehensive plan. In my role professionally, I oversee graduate education at a local university, and I'll draw an analogy here. Typically, our graduate students, on average, take about five years to complete a research degree, a PhD. Now, if a graduate student came to me after five years and said, oh, I've spent five years on this, but I need 180 days to finish my dissertation. Would you please grant me that time? I'm not gonna laugh at them and call them foolish and say, no, 180 days, that's unreasonable to ask, given that you've already invested five years of time to this. And that's exactly what Franklin Associates is doing. Franklin Associates is laughing at the Town of Caroline and saying, you've already invested with the time of your citizens 2,190 days, and we think it's laughable that you're gonna spend another 180 days to finalize your important and carefully thought out comprehensive plan. I find that offensive, and I'm very much in favor of the moratorium so that our citizens can complete a quality comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Kurt is up next.
Hi, my name is Kurt Jerka, and I've been a resident of the Town of Caroline for the past 33 years. I also would like to thank the board for their careful consideration of the proposed moratorium. I know it's a big undertaking and an important decision you have to make, and I appreciate all the work you're putting into it. I just want to state that I'm in support of a 180-day building moratorium to give the town the opportunity to complete the revision of its comprehensive plan. I feel it is the town board's responsibility to ensure that development within the town proceeds in a manner consistent with the values of its residents, and having a recently revised comprehensive plan will allow for that. The town board's decision to enact or reject the moratorium should be based on the desires of the town's residents and not the short-term business interests of individuals or corporations, particularly those of entities that are not actually part of our community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Alita Guida is up next.
Yes, this is Alita Guida. I'm an attorney at Couch White. Oh, no problem. It gets mispronounced often. I am here providing comments on behalf of Franklin Land Associates, and thank you for the opportunity to present at the public hearing. We have provided a comment letter dated April 15 and a follow-up letter, which relates mainly to one theme, which is that the public comment that we've heard so far has made it uniformly clear across the board that this moratorium is being asked for to shut down a single project. And that is unlawful and is also an inappropriate use of the moratorium authority. The town has every right to update its comprehensive plan. However, the comments received make it clear that the residents are seeking nothing other than to stop this project. And with respect to the comment recently made about Franklin Associates laughing at the additional six months, that completely misunderstands the comments. It's the state of the law in New York State that a business has a right to develop property under the existing land use regime and that moratorium should be used only where necessary to stop a deluge of applications or when there is an exigent emergency. One, two-acre, 9,000-square-foot project does not meet either legal requirement. And a landowner or applicant has every right to say, if it has been going on for six years, how could we expect that the pause would be only six months? The courts vigorously review the length of moratorium and will not allow a municipality to continue to shut down development much longer than a couple of years. And if six years has already passed, we have a concern that six months would turn into one year and on and on from there. And every applicant has a right to have that objection, and the courts of New York State agree. We thank you for the opportunity to comment and continue to vigorously oppose this moratorium.
Thank you, Alita.
Okay, Jesse, no, I'm sorry, Catherine and Gia Forest are next.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, there is a mute. You get a weird message with the mute. Hi there. Okay, so this situation began with a simple premise. A piece of land was sold to a developer, and the proposed development is a dollar store. Some people don't want that particular project in this location, but that's almost beside the point. It could have been a fast food chain, an apartment complex, garden supply company, or Starbucks. There are likely to be a range of opinions about each of these projects, and we cannot judge each of them in a reactive manner on an individual basis as they submit their applications to our review board. I believe that there is actually mostly agreement here that some more strategic planning is in order for our town. So what should we do? Zoning has already been raised. Zoning, in my view, would be unlikely to stop the Dollar General project, even if we had zoning in our town, given the other commercial businesses in the immediate vicinity of the project site. Trying the nodal development route is a worthy attempt, but without law to enforce it, this is only an aspirational phenomenon in our comprehensive plan. I'll get to the plan in a minute, but first I'd like to propose another approach, which is that I am strongly urging the town board to adopt formula business restrictions, which function in service to our town's vision. For those not familiar, these are requirements which serve to align the aesthetics and other features of a business, which would otherwise be a recognizable national chain with the character of a town. So if you've ever seen a McDonald's with Clappert siding or a big box store that's 2,500 square feet instead of the usual 9,000 or many more, that's a formula business restriction. Interestingly, the most compelling of the comments, in my view, that has come into our planning board in opposition to this moratorium describes the economic benefit that a, quote, "small retail store" would provide to both the landowner who is selling the land and the town. My problem with this story is that a nearly 10,000-square-foot Dollar General that continues to plant its flag in every unregulated rural town in America is not a small retail store. If you put some formula business restrictions on it in both design and community engagement, then I would be able to find more common grounds with this argument. In terms of the comprehensive plan, I cannot emphasize enough that the plan in its current form presents a very clear picture of our town and one that is not friendly to the proposed project, but without people to stand by it when policy decisions are made, this plan is just a bunch of words. Moratorium or not, the town must use existing means and language to assess whether projects are consistent with town vision and values. If they're not, that's grounds for rejecting a proposal. The applicant can then decide whether they will take steps to comply or take their business elsewhere. One way to invoke both the comprehensive plan and our site plan review law immediately is to require the applicant to provide evidence of compliance with site plan review design guidelines, which they will not be able to do specifically related to items 2, 8, 11, 13, 14, and 15. The review board can then reject the project if these tasks are not satisfied. I understand that guidelines are not law, but if they cannot be invoked to shape policy, I don't know what the point is of having them. It is striking to me that over 600 people have signed this moratorium petition. So I hope that, if nothing else, our elected town officials can see that our community opposes this project. And I'm asking that our town leadership be forceful in standing up against this applicant in any and every way possible, even when legal action is threatened, and we should expect that it will be. So please know that your constituents are behind you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine.
Jesse Bates is next.
Okay. Um, hello, I'm Jesse Bates. I'm seven years old, and I live in Brooktondale, New York. Um, I don't really want to be specific, but, you know, around where the Dollar General might be built. And, um, one reason why I think that, um, we should have a moratorium for it is that, Dollar Generals are already in and around Tompkins County, so I don't think we should have another one. And to be precise, eight. Eight Dollar Generals. Um, and, um, $20,000 Generals are already built in the United States. And, um, so what I'm trying to get at is, um, why does our general need another one near here? It's because there's already eight in and around Tompkins County. Um, and sixth is that we should save the resources to build something that is more useful and less economically harmful. Wait, just a second. Economically, can, oh, I did. Oh, I guess I did. I meant environmentally. Um, and, yeah, is that it? Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Jesse.
Hey, next up is Rita Rosenberg.
Where are we?
You're good.
So I have to thank Jesse for his comments. I assume you can hear me.
Yes, we hear you, Rita.
Okay, and thank all of you for unanimously voting to hold a public hearing for a moratorium on commercial development. And of course, thank you for inviting all your new best friends to tonight's open forum. On April 13, just prior to the town board meeting, I sent town board members the petition requesting a moratorium along with 267 signatures from concerned community members. In your agenda packet this evening, you should now have the moratorium petition with over 600 names and addresses. I am sure you will agree that this is an outcry to the town board members to enact a 180-day moratorium on commercial development. The overwhelming majority of the signatures are from your Town of Caroline, your neighbors, colleagues, family members, and friends who will be directly impacted by a Dollar General in our township. But let's not ignore the cry from the individuals in the town's surrounding areas and even beyond that felt compelled to join the brigade to stop the general. They are the concerned community members who garnered signatures, sent emails, letters, attended and shared feedback at town planning and review board meetings. They are truly engaged on so many levels because they care. They care for the environment, the farmland, the local economy, and the overall safety, health, and well-being of our community. So I recently walked along Route 79 where the proposed retail store is to be built. I imagine that parcel of farmland transformed into a Dollar General store with 30 paved parking spaces and physically and emotionally felt pain. Pain for the neighbor whose homestead is right on the property line and the family whose driveway would be directly across 79 from the Dollar General driveway and the farmhouse that is just a mere 100 yards from the site and a community that will have to endure the increased noise, lights, traffic, pollution, and overall unsafe conditions from a corporation that does not know or care about us. I also thought about the many families in our community who struggle to get healthy food and essential items to meet basic needs. And as a caring community, what action plan can we put in place to provide for them, especially in these desperate times? So I asked the town board members to carve out the time to see that proposed site and surrounding area and reflect not only on the negative impacts this corporate retail business will have on so many, but how you can join others by supporting the effort to work towards a more equitable and just Caroline. As our representatives, I'm confident that you will vote for what is best for our greater community as you listen thoughtfully to what your constituents and others most deeply care about, and my gratitude for your deep concern.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Okay, Alex Spencer is next.
Hi, I have spoken before, but I didn't know if it counted, so I just wanted to make sure that on this public hearing, my voice was heard. Dear board members, I'm speaking tonight to express my support for this moratorium. We have heard many rational and compelling arguments for why the proposed development at Route 79 and Landen Road would be terrible for our community, and I second those sentiments. But when considering what perspective to share tonight, rather than adding to the wonderful and necessary objective conversation, I feel more compelled to share a personal perspective. My house is the next one down from this proposed development, and the building of a 9,000-square-foot General Mercantile would greatly affect my quality of life. In fact, it already has, as I've lost sleep worrying that the road outside my home will become more dangerous to travel and walk on and that litter, noise, and unwanted light will cross the property lines and become part of my everyday. While I understand that it would be absurd to make a decision based on one resident's experience, I am fortified by the over 600 signatures and neighbors standing together to support this moratorium. At the same time, I want it to be clear that I am a member of this community. I have chosen to live here and raise my family here, and I don't think we owe this outside developer anything. If at all, it's my voice and my neighbors that matter most. I realize that we cannot create this law because of a single development. However, at the planning board meeting last week, someone called this particular project a wake-up call, and I agree. I find it energizing how many people are rallying to describe their hopes for what we do want for our town, and I'm excited to see how the momentum we have built will help shape Caroline's future. A moratorium will allow us the time to do so thoughtfully, intentionally, and democratically. Thank you, everyone who has signed, shared, spoken, and otherwise contributed to get us to this point. And thank you to the town board and subcommittees for all of your dedication and service.
Thank you, Alex.
Rebecca Schillenbach is next.
And no one after?
Just one time, no.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I also want to second or third or fourth all of the thanks that the board is receiving from your constituents. Thank you for being so diligent in this process. I support the town board's proposed moratorium on actions subject to site plan or subdivision review. The recently proposed retail store lends urgency to the need for a moratorium in order to continue revising our comprehensive plan, but it would be a mistake to assume, as the attorneys for the out-of-state developers Franklin and Associates recently asserted in their submitted letter, that it was the catalyzing factor in proposing such a moratorium. Concerned Caroline citizens have been considering the need for such a pause in order to finish updating the comprehensive plan for several years now, given the pace of change and development that is happening in our town since that plan was first conceived almost 15 years ago. We're all here because we care about our home and we care about each other. That care is an intangible part of the rural character that we wish to maintain, that is mentioned in the comprehensive plan. It's an intangible part that makes Caroline a real place, not a generic sprawl populated by the corporate entities that have erased what is particular and special about so many other places across our country. A pause on actions subject to site plan or subdivision review will give us the time we need to gather our neighbors around the vision that we all actually already share for our community, one that preserves and protects what we most cherish about it and which makes it not just like every other interchangeable suburb or sprawl-infested strip. Finally, I just want to say that the recent refusal on the part of the representative from Franklin and Associates to straightforwardly state the name of the corporate entity wishing to establish its presence in Caroline when asked directly betrays a lack of understanding on his part about what constitutes rural ethical character. Some of those rural ethical character values are trustworthiness, honesty, integrity, and a willingness to stand behind one's efforts and one's word. If the developer cannot stand behind his own endeavor with integrity, that that tells me that he lacks rural character and his endeavor will also. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Paula Welling is next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. All right. Um, so first, like many others have said, I just want to thank the board for your consideration and for your care and all of the time and, and thought that you're putting into this. Um, I wanted to specifically address the comments about the reason for the public outcry. And as others have stated, I wholeheartedly believe that the public comments are rising because this project doesn't align with even our existing comprehensive plan and that we have the right as community members to raise our voices to object to a development that doesn't align with our vision of our town as expressed in that plan. Um, I can speak for myself, and I'm confident that I can speak for others in saying that I object not only to this specific project, but that I would also object to any other similar project in this location or a similar location. I hope that this moratorium can be protective against this project as well as any similar projects that could arise. Like others have stated, uh, this proposed project has served as a wake-up call. Um, there are many reasons why this project stands against the values clearly stated in our existing comprehensive plan, as many others have mentioned. Um, I won't take the time to outline all those reasons, environmental, economic, relating to the character of our town. But I just, uh, want you to know that I wholeheartedly second them. Um, as Catherine stated, I implore the board to fight in every possible way against this project and any similar project until we can find a way to pass ordinances, whatever shape that may take, um, that can shape development into the future in ways that our town collectively hopes to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paula.
Megan Barber is next.
Where do I do it here? Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Hi, my name is Megan Barber. I live on Creamery Road. I grew up in the town of Caroline, and I moved back here three years ago to raise my son here the same way that I was raised, surrounded by farms, family, the beauty of our fields and forests, and the kindness of our neighbors. I'm speaking tonight in favor of the moratorium. Over the past year, the planning board has been engaging our town in these very conversations through surveys and potluck meetings to articulate our community's shared vision for our future, a vision which includes supporting local businesses and preserving our town's rural character. Now we are faced with a possible sighting of a Dollar General in our town, a development which is in direct opposition to our shared vision. It's important for the town as a whole, through the language of the comprehensive plan, to voice its vision and to do what we can to enact that vision, guiding new development in our town so that it is consistent with our shared values. I urge the town board to enact the moratorium so that the planning board has time to finish the comprehensive plan, and I urge you not to be swayed by urgency. We owe it to ourselves and to potential developers to clearly express our vision for our town so that any potential developer can be thoughtful in deciding whether or not it makes sense to develop in Caroline. The developer of the Dollar General, Mr. Gage, is not from Caroline, and it seems that he sees our community as poor, lacking, and ripe for a discount store that will take from our pockets to line his own. We know the truth, that here in Caroline, we are rich in fertile farmland, in caring neighbors, in hard-working citizens. We know what's best for ourselves, our children, and our land. Please enact the moratorium so that we can have our say. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Martin Hatch is up next.
Yes, hi. I'm Martin Hatch. I consider myself to be a citizen of Greater Brookendale. I spent many years on the Dryden Planning Board. And, uh, just, uh, which may have been misinterpreted, it wasn't a commercial for Dryden, for the Dollar General, but just a note saying that Town Board of Dryden, or the Town Planning Board of Dryden just passed a, the Dollar, a Dollar General through that will go on Route thirteen. My point in sending that around is enough's enough. I mean, uh, I've heard wonderful things about and feel wonderful things about the Caroline, uh, community in spirit. And, um, I, I would say we don't have to go in the same direction as everybody else. There've been many philosophers that have said it. You, 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 you have to, uh, think about what's right for your place, not, not, uh, not follow the, uh, the winds of, of, of cash or time. A moratorium is the absolute right thing because it, it helps people feel like they are different, they are a different community, they, they have something that is special and can, can keep it, um, keep it together and, and plan it well. I don't want to say that I didn't continue on the Dryden Planning Board for any particular reason, but I could say that one thing that was quite discouraging was the directions that it went, uh, to change significantly its character and bow to pressures that were beyond the needs of the community. And I think that, that's evident in the most recent decision they made. Hopefully Caroline will consider it, will pass an moratorium and consider going forward with its plans for a solid community with a good, clear community spirit, um, working together. Thanks.
Thank you, Marty.
Ross Brinkerhoff is next.
Okay, can, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Well, I'll, I'll keep it sort of, uh, brief. I, I think it's, it's clear from the, the number of people that have, you know, decided to take their, their Tuesday evening to sign on to this, uh, Zoom meeting and who presumably would have showed up in person if we were able to do that, that there's significant interest in this issue. The whole purpose of this meeting and sort of the, the governing process that we're all taking part in is to, in my mind, give people a say in how the town is run, what happens here. We all live here. We have an interest in what goes on, and the whole reason we're having this meeting is so that we can all participate. It seems like we need to give that process time to work itself out. I think if we do not have the moratorium and don't give this careful consideration, it would be, it would sort of fly in the face of the whole point that we're having this meeting. That's, we need to consider this carefully, and if we need more time to do it, then I don't see anything wrong with that, all legal threats aside. That's why we're here, to make a good decision. That's all I have.
Thank you, Russ.
That is everyone, Mark, who has indicated that they wish to speak.
Okay. Is, is it possible for you to?
We have a, we have a, we have a hand.
Okay, I, I'm wondering if she's, okay. I'll just, uh, I will just ask anybody that would wish to speak, um, that still wishes to speak, to, to raise your hand. There should be a, at the bottom of your participants' window, an option to, to raise your blue, um, Zoom hand. So I'll, I'll give that just a second because I did see, I thought I, I did get a message from someone who I thought wanted to speak.
Yep, we have two, we have a couple of, a couple more hands now. Okay. And I can't read the whole name because we've run out of characters, but it's Kira and Rose.
Hey there, I'm on a mobile phone, so I was just getting the mute up. Hello, my name is Kira Fritsky Randolph, and I live with my wife Rose and our son Crosby on Hickory Trail, which runs parallel off of seventy-nine to the proposed site of this retail development. Um, I'm a real estate agent in New York State, but specifically as part of the Ithaca Board of Realtors, and I'm voicing my support for the moratorium on commercial development in the town of Caroline. It's very important to the residents here, especially those that want to move to this area to retain the rural character and the local entrepreneur spirit that we have and that we embrace here. And I just also wanted to echo that any development on this site would, I believe, bring this community to its feet to really come together and evaluate is, does this fit the character of our town? Does this fit the existing comprehensive plan? That was from two thousand and six, that's already in place. There are numerous elements that this is the best course of action to take the time, a hundred and eighty days for this moratorium, and we just take it from there. Thank you very much for all of your time on the town review board and the planning board for your attention to this matter and for listening to the residents who live here. And just to echo what Catherine Goldberg Forrest said, you have our support, you have the support of the community, whatever comes our way, we will be behind you. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Kira.
All right, Hannah is up next, Mark.
Elizabeth Miller, we live at sixty-five Landon. We just wanted, as a family, we wanted to express our deep concern about the possibility of the Dollar General. When we come over the hill on seventy-nine to come towards our house, I always say things like, if this were Wales, we would just be like, huh, this is amazing, but we live here. But if there were a Dollar General there, I don't think we'd say that anymore. So I love all the facts that people have presented, and I don't have them, but I do have this fact that this is a rural area, and a Dollar General would really be a scourge on the area. It would just ruin the whole feeling of this place. And we are deeply concerned about it, so we're in favor of the moratorium or any other actions that the board can take to seriously consider this and hopefully oppose it and any further billing of this type. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mark, Richard Anderson is up next.
Unmute me? Okay. Hello, folks, uh, I'm Rich Anderson. I'm a longtime Brookendale resident. Be very brief here, I'm in support of the moratorium and, uh, for six months, uh, to look at, to update the comprehensive town plan. My main concerns about this particular site for development with the Dollar General are safety concerns. Just, I'm familiar with that intersection, it's on a grade there, cars come fast. I'm not sure what the speed limit is, but I know they come down that hill pretty fast. There's more people out walking and everything, I'm just really, I want to look at that safety issue. That's, uh, my primary concern. So I am in support of the, uh, moratorium. I thank you for everybody's time and looking into us. I'm encouraged by the town involvement in sliding this. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Powers is up next, Mark.
Great.
Greetings. Thank you for the opportunity to share here on this platform and to gather with our community in concern over, uh, what's to come of our neighborhood. Um, I wanted to talk about how I believe, I am in support of this moratorium, deeply in support of it, to have time to be able to, uh, develop the plan as it aligns with local business and locally-made goods and locally-grown foods. We have an abundance of incredible farmers within our midst and our neighborhood and, and makers and, and what we've seen in these last six weeks or so, if nothing else, is how much people are ready and willing and able and showing up to care for one another and our cash-poor neighbors who do need fresh foods and who do need basic items. And, and there is real difficulty in getting that in, in a rural kind of food desert of sorts. And if we concentrate our efforts towards a community-birthed project to this end for meeting these needs within our community, as well as the imperative need to deeply strengthen our public transportation system, I think that it will align so much more with the vision of, of, of all the six hundred and more folks that, um, live in and around this area. And, um, yeah, sometimes we, um, yeah, being this thoughtful is just, I'm, I'm so proud to live here and, um, and I just want to add a voice to taking a little bit more time to hash out the vision and, um, move forward with, um, projects that align with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Powers. Is Gary Hodges up next, John?
How do I do it?
Yep, we hear you, Gary.
Hi. I just wanted to say, I live on Snyder Hill Road with my wife, and I've been here twenty-five years. I used to travel seventy-nine a lot and around the state. All I know of John, Dollar General stores is that they seem to go out of business very soon, and they become a, an eyesore. I, I am quite aware of certain stores that look like their up, their upkeep is done quite well, and things look decent, but I believe this would be an eyesore to our community. I'd be probably three to four miles from this. I'm also concerned, not only as others are, with the safety issues, but also with just the general light pollution and the environmental concerns that that brings in, as well as what further development might be encouraged by there being a Dollar General store and that section of property becoming what I would consider additional eyesore or strip mall or something like that. I would really hope that you on the board would really consider that we have a wonderful place and, uh, it stays in a, in a better means, if we have development, to become something that's an improvement rather than an eyesore. And I thank you very much for your time and all the people who have already spoken. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gary.
John Reed is up next.
Okay, great.
Hey, my name is John Reed. I live on Route seventy-nine and have, have been for the last fourteen years. Our whole country right now is in the midst of a huge localization, localization in response to a virus from far away. We've managed to slow the spreading of that virus by limiting who we have contact with. I, I feel that's a really fitting analogy. I urge the board to, uh, to use social isolation, to, uh, get your mask, your local laws, and other personal protective equipment in order, and then put it on before you let strangers into our community. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Beth Osborne is next.
Hi, um, my name's Rob Meagle. I'm watching this with my wife. I want to thank the board for their time, and I'd like to thank all my neighbors for coming out tonight and, uh, voicing their concerns. We've been living in the area for, what, like six, six years at this point? We, we love this area. We were runners and bikers, and honestly, every time Landon Road, we were just looking at the pictures we take. Every time we go down that road, there's a different view and just like a different sunset. And, uh, you know, the thing with this Dollar General is just- And you know, the thing with this Dollar General is just that in terms of the plan, as any other project, if it was a McDonald's, a Wendy's, just some other chain piece of crap that's going to be on the road. I mean, we could have a conversation if it was, if it was a community solar farm or if it was something, you know, like a local business or something like that. But it just sort of gets back to, I remember when there was the debate recently and we were talking about how fracking is still something that is a concern of people. And it just sort of gets back to sort of this individual thought that like, I obviously, we have property. When we sell that property, we'd like to make money from it in terms of selling the house. But I would never consider selling the property so that, or fracking it or doing something that would basically impact all the people around me in a negative way. The thought that the money would basically drive me to make that decision is just sort of disgusting to me. So thank you for your time. I mean, I'm in favor of the moratorium. I think Catherine Forrest said it probably best. They're going to be coming at us with everything. The moratorium, we need to consider, we need to consider all these other options in terms of stopping this sort of incursion into the town of by corporate interests. And that's all I really have to say, but I just want to thank you all.
Great. Thank you, Rodney, if I got your name right. Mary Alice Kobler is next.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody involved because this is how our neighborhood, our town of Caroline turns out. And I want to particularly thank the members of the board and the members on our planning board, our site plan members. You have truly done a fabulous job of involving the whole Caroline community in this comprehensive plan. Yes, it takes time. It takes community meetings. It takes all the hashing out that presents our future with the kind of vision that we, that we have for this place. It doesn't allow for the moneyed and the bluster interests of the Dollar General to just go, oh, we can do what we want. No, you can't. We have a whole Caroline community here and we want our community to be the way we want it to be. And we have done lots of town board meetings, surveys, everything that's needed to do takes time. And that's why it's taken the time to get our comprehensive plan done. I fully support the moratorium and I am fully against this development on 79 and Landon where it is truly a traffic hazard. I've seen more than one, many actually, accidents there because the, the traffic is coming straight on, so it's hard to tell exactly how fast it is. And so people going across Landon get broadsided and it's just, it's a real safety hazard. But mostly I, I oppose it because it doesn't fit with our comprehensive plan as it is now. And I surely don't believe it fits in our comprehensive plan that's being developed. And anybody that thinks that we should just do it is just the moneyed corporate interests that think that they can just buy in. And I object to that. So thank you very much for this meeting and your hard work.
Thank you, Mary Ellis.
Good evening, all. My name is Steve Vukas. I work with Bowler Engineering on behalf of the applicant for a proposed retail store in the town of Franklin. And here in a lot of the comments for the proposed moratorium that's being discussed now, and there was a lot of site specific ones related to our project. And just wanted to address the technical comments briefly about traffic and environmental concerns. If we are on a New York State highway, New York State Route 79, that is under New York State Department of Transportation jurisdiction. And we've analyzed our entrance to be in compliance with New York State DOT regulations. We found that we exceed the, the expectations for site distance, both to the left and to the right, the east and the west. And where we've received stage one approval from New York State DOT as well. As far as other environmental aspects, we are also going to be in compliance with the, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to ensure that our storm water is treated in concordance with their latest storm water design manual. Just wanted to make sure that those items were addressed, the technical comments that I've heard in regards to our, our site specific project and discussing the moratorium. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Stephen. Audrey Atardo is next.
Hello, my name is Dan Valanti. I'm here with Audrey Atardo and we're joining Zoom together. I've lived here in town of Caroline for nine years now and I bought the house here because of its rural character and because it didn't have a lot of commercial development. And that's why I love it here. I don't want to see much commercial development in these neighborhoods. I believe that this proposal is not in alignment with the 2006 comprehensive plan. And 14 years later, I think the, the vision of this town has changed in favor of more rural, more agricultural, more local business. And I don't think this project is aligned with that. The other thing I want to say is in response to a comment that Ms. Gaita made earlier about positing that a moratorium would be illegal unless it's an exigent emergency. I think a global pandemic qualifies as an exigent emergency when we have an unprecedented economic shutdown. And then we're not physically here at Town Hall. We are talking remotely via Zoom. And it is no secret that a lot of people in our neighborhood do not have access to broadband and may not even know what is happening. You may not have an opportunity to talk about it. And I think that presents a lot of inequities for our community. So I'm very much in favor of the moratorium to put a pause on things and so that we can get our comprehensive plan together, if not just for the, the rural character of the community, but for democracy itself, because we're all remote now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Paula Welling is next.
Hi again. I already spoke, so I'm going to keep it really quick, but I did want to address Steve, a point, Stephen Vukas, a point that you made about the traffic on that road. I think all of my neighbors already are familiar with this, but you know, you can say it's safe when you're analyzing it from a distance based on speed limits. But if you lived here, you would know that that is not how people drive on that road. You would know how the grade feels when you're on it. I admit that I regularly drive 50 to 55 miles per hour on that road and I get passed all the time. People think I'm driving like a granny and I'm going almost 10 over. I wholeheartedly agree with my neighbors that this is not a safe stretch of road for a parking lot. That's all I wanted to add. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Paula. Matt V is next.
Hello, my name is Matthew Velasco and I'm here with my partner, Brianna Beltran. And we've been listening to all these comments and I'm really compelled by all the arguments that are being made by my fellow community members. So I wanted to offer something slightly different. When I was moving here, I just finished my dissertation and I plunged back into Tolkien's work, which renders a pretty clear vision of the value of the rural and the threat of unfettered capitalism. And so he writes in The Scourging of the Shire, "The travelers trotted on and the sun began to sink towards the white downs far away on the western horizon. They came by to buy water by its wide pool. And there they had first, their first really painful shock. This was Frodo and Sam's own country. And they found out now that they cared about it more than any other place in the world. Many of the houses that they had known were missing. Some seemed to have been burned down. The pleasant row of old hobbit holes in the bank on the north side of the pool were deserted and their little gardens that used to run down bright to the water's edge were rank with weeds. Worse, there was a whole line of all ugly new houses all along poolside where the Hobbiton Road ran close to the bank. An avenue of trees had stood there. They were all gone. And looking up with dismay up the road towards Bag End, they saw a tall chimney of brick in the distance. It was pouring out black smoke into the evening air." I don't think Tolkien left any moral ambiguity and, and I don't think we need to either.
Thank you. Yeah, that appears to conclude our list of speakers, Mark. Great. All right, I guess final call, if anybody who hasn't spoken wishes to speak. Great. I want to thank everybody for attending our public hearing tonight to let us know their thoughts about the proposed moratorium law. As I said at the beginning, I, I would like to keep the, the hearing open at this point and not close it right now so that we'll continue it at the next meeting. And I would expect that we'll, we'll follow the process, but I would expect that we'll, we'll bring this to a vote at our May 13 Town Board Business Meeting. As I read in my introductory comments, we are, this is a draft moratorium. And so we are reviewing it and considering input from the public as well as our town attorney. And it's possible that we will, we'll edit it or modify it. And if we do, we will, we'll make that publicly available for people to, to comment on and review. So with that, I would like to, I guess, move to a town board discussion of, of our next steps for, for the next two meetings and, and get board members feelings, input information, what, how you would like to, to proceed going forward. So we have our, we'll have our May 5 Town Agenda Meeting. I would expect by then that we will have thought about this some more and received information. And we may, I would propose that we discuss where we're at, at that meeting. And then move forward from there to the, to the business meeting. Does that sound like a good plan of action? Yes. The other, the other thing that I would like to, to, to bring up is the, so that is authorizing our town attorney to, to do additional work and open that for discussion of how we, how we want to direct him moving forward. And I, I guess I, I feel, I feel that we should, we should ask him to, to provide us whatever information in, feedback to, to strengthen the moratorium, to inform it. I feel, I feel very good about it. But I, I want to, I want to get everybody's thoughts on, on doing that.
This is Tim. I'm very, very much in favor of pursuing, as you suggest, and consulting our attorney to see if he has additional suggestions to make. And then following up, continuing public hearing next week with further concrete discussion. Thank you very much.
Great. Okay. Thanks, Tim. Others?
I guess my question is, is there something specific that we're looking for our attorney to weigh in on beyond what we have in front of us now? And
I, you know, I, I don't have specific guidance. I would be looking to him for any, any editing or, you know, anything that he thinks, you know, we may want that it could improve it.
I actually, I do have a suggestion there, Mark. One of our speakers tonight, and I'm sorry, there were so many that I don't remember specifically who said it, cited some provisions, I believe, of the, I believe it was of the Site Plan Review Law. I think there were three areas and I would be interested in hearing his thoughts on that. And we can go back through the recording and find that comment to give him a reference point.
Okay. And refresh my memory, what, what was the, what was the comment about the Site Plan Review Law? That
I'm paraphrasing at best. And I would, I would really need to go through and hear it again to, to kind of fully digest it. But I believe it was proposed that some of what's being considered might be in conflict with provisions of that. And so I would be interested in hearing guys' interpretation of that.
Okay, that's, I didn't pick that up, but that's, that's fine with me. Okay, so I guess.
I'm trying to unmute himself, but I.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that I believe that that was in the context of the, the provisions to keep in, in, to be consistent with the, the values and the provisions of the comprehensive plan. I think that that was the context that that was, that was raised, if I recall correctly.
Okay. And you, I mean, I guess my, what I'm suggesting is, is basically as, as our attorney would for any local law that we proposed to, to, to provide us guidance or recommendations based on, on what we've heard from the public and at these meetings and and then, and then make modifications upon discussion with the board. Does that, that seem acceptable to everyone? So Tim's got his hand up. You're muted, Tim.
I'm passing to Irene.
Is Irene muted or wishing to speak?
People seem to be remuting. I've unmuted both Tim and Irene. I'm not sure what's going.
Doing it. So could you make sure all the board members are unmuted, John?
I'm doing it, but they seem to remute. Irene and Tim are unmuted at the moment.
Yeah, he's been trying. So first, my apologies for disappearing. My dog jumped the fence.
Oh.
So I, I'm back.
I noticed incredibly quiet.
I, I gather that we're discussing next steps at this point and possibly having our attorney review the, the draft moratorium in light of review the the draft moratorium in light of comments.
Correct.
That, okay, that that's something that I certainly support. I I think it's pretty, pretty much, you know, routine that that we do this, that we introduce a draft law. And as we hear from various parties, there there are elements that perhaps need to be reconsidered, and so I support us doing that.
Great. Thank you. Did you get your dog?
I did.
Okay, good.
I I don't know what I'm going to do for letting her out tonight, but I got her.
You can come get my foxes that I have under my porch, too.
Well, you know, I was on the phone earlier today with John and a fox dashed by as we were talking. It was like, oh, that's why my dog keeps going crazy in the yard. So I bet that's what she was after.
I was gonna call Cal to come take care of it for me.
Great. Well, so with that feedback, are there any other board, is there any other board feedback? I, you know, I'll let our attorney know. And we'll move forward.
That will, in regard to provisions of the existing comprehensive plan, I think that's what Catherine mentioned was provisions in the existing comprehensive plan that they didn't feel that they would be to meet.
I'm sorry, Cal. I, you're you're choppy, or I I didn't. Can you say that again?
Sorry. I believe Catherine mentioned that there was provisions, existing provisions in the existing comprehensive plan that there's design guidelines that
Oh.
would not be able to be met. And that that's the, what you would be looking for for comment on by the town's attorney.
No, I don't think that that would be the job of the review board in conversation with the with the developers to to go through the design guidelines and to discuss how how they intend to meet them. Okay, so that that's a different process than this, Cal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it possible that there's things we would be requiring that aren't legitimate to require?
To to our knowledge, no. You know, we've had our
Okay.
Site Plan Review Law for a while. We, a couple of summers ago, we had a moratorium in place following the county's enactment of some changes to the two thirty-nine review process. And we wanted to have our design guidelines align with with the county's environmental dimensions of two thirty-nine review. And so we hit pause then to to revise those design guidelines. So as far as I know, those are, you know, we followed the the county's structure on those and and it becomes part of the conversation that the review board has with the developers to how to proceed with with the project that they want to do. So.
Okay.
Great.
And and I will point out, Cal, that they are guidelines. They're they're different than a law. So some of them reference laws that that we have on the books and, you know, would need to, in in the instances where they are attached to a law, like, you know, we have certain wetland preservation, stormwater stuff that I I believe exceeds what DEC typically has. And and so there are, you know, certain design guidelines that do reference our local laws that I, again, it would need to be a discussion with the company as to how they were gonna uphold the guidelines that we have in place. But it is a conversation about about guidelines that some of them reference laws that need to be upheld. And some of them are guidelines that become more of a discussion.
But I mean, I think we need to focus, keep our focus on the on the proposed moratorium that would permit us to finish our revised comprehensive plan so that any commercial projects would be in line with that and specific discussions about a specific project or really site plan business.
Well, my impression is that right now there's at least some preliminary conversations going on in the review board. And so
Yeah.
Just just
outsider.
You know, I I understand that that it's it's not our town board's purview. I was just explaining to my ability what, you know, for Cal to better understand.
Right. But that, I think. Thank you. And I, yeah, I appreciate what you're saying, Tim. It's it's important for everybody to understand that's a that's not what we're considering tonight. That's a completely separate thing that's under purview of the review board. So, thank you. Great. I don't think there's anything for more for us to consider tonight. Unless anybody has something for me. We will, our, as I said, the public hearing, we are holding that open now. And I would expect at our May fifth Town Agenda Meeting for us to provide another opportunity for public comment. And as I said, I would expect the town board to, you know, have some discussion based on where we've gone from now until up to that point, so.
I guess I'd like to hear some sort of legal opinion on the these formulas, restrictions.
But that's, you know, I mean, that's beyond, in my opinion, that's, that isn't.
It is, it is beyond the scope of this discussion and yet.
Exactly. I I mean, I, I think, you know, that's an interesting topic for another day, basically.
Okay.
You just think. Yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's out of bounds to just suggest that we want to, you know, converse with our attorney about the range of legal options available to us, so.
I agree.
Okay. That's, that's fine. I guess I would just, yeah. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't know if other people did this before, while I was out chasing my dog around the neighborhood. But I really appreciate everybody's comments tonight and and their real concern for this town and its character. And it is a lot of what makes living here so special. That and that we all can go out in our backyards and see foxes evidently.
Our front porch.
I, yeah, that's, that's exactly right, Irene. I think we all feel exactly the same way. And I really appreciate everybody who is engaged with us and and came out to speak to us tonight, so.
This is why we're very happy to serve the town and honored to do so.
Yeah. Great.
I guess still my question comes back to what what are they gonna do with it when they're done with it? I mean, I think somebody alluded to, you know, if the the business model doesn't fit and it's not a successful store, do they just, can they walk away with it? And I don't know, I guess it's, that's just one of my pet peeves. If it doesn't work out, you know, it's not a profitable business.
Well, their attorney is on the call. Maybe she'd like to address it.
Can I suggest that that, again, would be something that would be appropriate within the review board conversation?
I I think it's not appropriate here. I really agree.
That that it's it's something that 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 can be discussed, you know, I know with solar citing that that there's decommissioning clauses that are incorporated. And whether, you know, the the review board would want to have those sorts of discussions as well. I think, you know, it's in their purview to to think of of those things, Cal. It's certainly an issue that we've heard many people raise and and worthy of attention. It's just, I think, not our purview to do it.
Or the planning board, but not here.
And I I really make this opportunity to reinforce the point that what we're talking about tonight here is a moratorium in order for us to complete our comprehensive plan so that we can guide development properly in the town with regard to any and all developments, not this particular one. I just really think that's that's so important. And this is certainly the one that got our attention. But that's not, that's not what this is about. So I just, that's a really a crucial point.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, fair enough.
Yeah, yeah, that's well, well said, Mark, and important to to repeat to to not only us, but to really to everybody. That this is about supporting and protecting the the broader values of the town, respecting the work that's been done by the planning board to to enhance the our understanding of of how we want to move, you know, what our vision is for our community. And that's, that's what we want to have a chance to give that some breathing room, so.
Great. Thank you. Great. So with that, I'm gonna make a motion to enter in the meeting.
Second.
And seconded by Tim. Again, I'll emphasize that the public hearing is still open. And again, I will redundantly say, thanks, everybody so much for coming out tonight and telling us your hopes and dreams for Caroline. And with that, thanks, everybody, and we'll see you next time.
TTFN.
All right.